All right, we are being recorded. Thanks, everyone, for your patience, your time and your talent this evening and your service as always. We will... Let me flip my... Could we call the roll, please?
Justy Orndorfer.
Here.
Trustee Backhorst.
I'm sorry about that. What was that?
Oh, we're calling the roll. Trustee Backhorst.
Yes, present.
Trustee Moore Baldoff. I think she's coming in right now.
Just got on.
Trustee Moore Baldoff. Trustee Stokbrand.
Here.
Trustee Warren.
Here.
President Mckegg.
Here. Thank you. So, all members of the board are present, and has the meeting been noticed?
You forgot me, but I'm here.
Oh, Trustee Ursink.
Oh, I thought I called you. My apologies.
Has the meeting been noticed according to law?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, special order of business. There is none this evening. Item five, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink. Are there... Is there any discussion?
I'd like to pull item five or B, please.
B is in boy.
B is in boy.
Okay. Any other items you'd like to remove from the agenda, the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, show of hands or say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six, seven, zero. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That would be five B, consider regular village board minutes, October 18th, 2021. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you. I think we have a problem with the... On page 254 of the packet, the last paragraph, we're talking about parking, and it says, "Most of the board continue to support a one-to-one parking ratio." I think that that should say, "Continue to support a lower parking ratio." That was what the consensus was. There was not a... Because I... Just as recently as September, I believe, a motion to lower it failed, so there was consensus to lower the ratio.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with that. I saw that too, and what I was wondering if it referred to was, I remember at the end asking how the ordinance change would be noticed according to the hearing notice or the type-two notice, and manager Ewald said that due to four trustees supporting the one-to-one ratio, that it would be noticed at one-to-one.
Maybe I would start off by the word "continued," because for, you know, a couple of months, there has not been support for one-to-one.
Right. So as long as we... I don't mind. I'm changing, and I just want that direction, that that was the direction that was taken and that that was agreed upon at the... That that was discussed during the meeting. So it's my only...
Understood.
To clarify that, but I understand your point. So I wonder, is that something that we can fix here in the meeting, or do we need to take it back and then bring it to the next meeting? I don't want to spend a lot of time wordsmithing.
I'd be happy to review the tape if that would be acceptable to the board. I'm just not going to be able to do it while we're in the meeting.
Yeah. Why don't we do that and bring it back? Thank you.
So could there be...
I move to defer it to a subsequent meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you for that, often. All those in favor, show of hands or voice.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero to defer these minutes for review to a future meeting. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, public hearings. We have none this evening. Moving on to item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda or for something later in the agenda. If you would like to be heard, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Please state your name and address, and we ask for a time allowance of three minutes max, two minutes preferred. Is there anyone registered to speak this evening, village manager Ewald?
No, there's not, and I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, new business. Nine A, I'm really looking forward to, the oath of office. I'd like to welcome our new village clerk, Toya Harrell, this evening, and is here to join us. And with pleasure, I would like to administer the oath of office. Let's see, I had it set aside. I was so organized. And now I can't find it.
While you're doing that, President Mckegg, so oath of office for village clerk?
It's 283 in the packet.
So Rebecca, does this mean you'll be stopped and down?
Right here. Okay, so if you raise your hand, I believe that's what's... I, Toya Harrell.
I, Toya Harrell.
Who have been appointed to the office of clerk in the village of Shorewood.
Who have been appointed to the office of village clerk for Shorewood.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the ordinances of the village of Shorewood.
And the ordinances of the village of Shorewood.
And faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Is there anything that anybody would like to say to welcome Ms. Harrell to the organization or vice versa? Trustee Backhorst, yeah.
Welcome, Ms. Harrell.
Thank you.
You are now our fourth official, and we did have an interim clerk of the village manager, but the fourth that I've had the pleasure of serving with. So I look forward to getting to know you, and thank you for being willing to serve our village.
Trustee Baldoff.
I just wanted to say, welcome and thank you. I agree with trustee Backhorst. Thank you for serving our community and really look forward to getting to meet you and getting to know you, and you have an incredibly important and thankless job, like basically all of the jobs that our incredible staff do, and we really appreciate that you're going to be here with us in Shorewood, and like I said, really look forward to getting to know you.
Thank you. Trustee Warren.
Same. Just going to say, welcome to... Welcome, and we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, same here. Trustee Stokbrand.
I'll echo everyone else. Welcome to the Shorewood organization, and thank you so much, and I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you.
Trustee Orndorfer.
You've heard it before. Thanks for joining us. Really looking forward to working with you and excited to meet you live and in person at some indeterminate point in the future, but thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, welcome, Toya. Really excited to meet you. I mean, obviously, everybody else, you know, said it, so I'm excited to meet you, excited to get back into meetings in person, and I can't wait to get to know a little bit about you and why you were, you know, why you were interested in a position here in Shorewood. So we're grateful to have a clerk, and we're grateful to have you here. So really appreciate it, and welcome.
Thank you.
Great, and I agree with everything that's been said. If we were in person, we would have gone around and shaken hands and welcomed you in person. We look forward to doing that at our first opportunity when we return to in-person meetings, and if there's anything that any of us can do to make your transition to the organization easier or more supported, please let us know.
I will.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to item nine B, consider ordinance 3030 and ordinance amending subsection 500-26, winter parking. And I'll just note that we're six minutes early on that estimated time, so just saying. Director Gripenchung.
Thank you, President Mckegg. So in addition to the information provided in your staff report, I just wanted to give a brief overview, and then I am available to answer any questions that you might have, but as a reminder, this was discussed, as well as the next two ordinances, as part of the six-month update of parking that was presented on August 2nd of the village board, in which direction was provided to staff to prepare these ordinance changes, and we've prepared them hopefully in time that if adopted tonight, we would be able to implement them for December 1st. So that goes for all three ordinances, but the first one before us tonight is for winter parking regulations, which are within 526 of the village code. As a reminder, the analysis recommended in general that we be consistent in our application of regulations, in part both for user comprehension and enforcement, and so that any exceptions to rules that we have can be identified and justified, but in general, we should be consistent with our application of the regulations. So to that point, staff, including myself, the police department, and DPW did review how we currently have winter parking posted and regulated in the village, and it is our recommendation that the village goes with a consistent street width of 36 feet or greater, in which regulations would not be required. A street of 36 feet or greater has adequate room for plows to get through with parking on both sides, and so in that instance, it is not necessary that we regulate or prohibit parking from December 1st through March 1st on certain streets. And so what actually happens in our review of the streets is that we expand the possibility of winter parking in several streets. They are noted in your specific memo. So with that, the code is being recommended to be updated to match that consistent policy recommendation. Once again, we're mostly expanding parking options. We are reducing it in two specific instances where we are unsure why it was never regulated in the first place, and those do relate to areas surrounding the school, Morris and Murray, and we did reach out to the school district, and they were acceptable, and they understood why we would consistently regulate those areas. And so we think in general, A, they should be based on the consistency factor, and then it will also help for snowplow removal in those areas, which I think is a critical component of getting kids safely to and from school, et cetera. So once again, we're not sure why that was not ever done in the first place, but that would be consistent. And yeah, I think that is the summary of my report. So if adopted, the code would match the policy consistency of regulating winter parking on streets less than 36 feet in width, but not greater than 36 feet in width.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up to public comment. Are there any members of the public? And I do see that trustees are eager to speak, but let's hear from the public first on this matter. If you would like to be heard on this matter, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself, state your name and address, and then please limit your comments to three minutes.
President Mckegg, I do not see any public that have their hand raised, but I do see trustee Orndorfer and trustee Ursink.
Okay, so trustee Ursink, I think, was first, so we'll move on to trustee discussion. Some closing comment.
Trustee Orndorfer was first.
Oh, thank you for your honesty on that. Trustee Orndorfer.
Much appreciated, trustee Ursink. Thank you. I just wanted to give some clarity in terms of how Menlo has been handled historically and why and how it will be handled moving forward, and it's going to be handled in a different way than it has in the past. Just want to get a little more clarification on what was laid out in the document. Thank you.
Yeah, so I did spell that Menlo is inconsistent with that general regulation, so as I noted, staff's recommendation would be that streets of 36 feet or wider would not have the regulation, but Menlo has two streets separated by a boulevard, and so it's 18 feet, so theoretically, it should be prohibited in both of those street sections, but historically, it's always been an outlier with respect to how DPW does treat it. So it's currently regulated and signed that no one should park during a snowfall, and the regulation actually goes further to say until 10:00 a.m. the next day, and that would allow DPW to get their trucks through. So with 18 feet, the snowplow blade is 11 feet. The only way they can get through when people are parked on there would be to jump the curb or otherwise, or perhaps to call in a different truck, perhaps from an alley or something of that nature. And so we are not recommending that we change it at this time. What we are recommending is that we would start enforcing it more strictly, so it is technically a tow-away zone. So if vehicles are parked there longer than necessary, and DPW just can't get through there with a regular truck, we would be sending communication to the residents on Menlo that we need to get our regular trucks through there at some point, and so we're just giving everyone the heads up that if necessary, we would start possibly considering towing those vehicles if we had to. Obviously, we don't want to have to do that. That's a lot of work on a lot of people's parts. But in general, we can't get through there if a car is parked on the street. And so the existing regulation, which is counter to the general consistency rule, would be remaining. We did consider changing it up, and we reached out to at least one or two residents on Menlo, and they gave us the history of why it was that way, and so we just didn't have a way to make it match that without prohibiting parking on both sides, which was not seen as feasible because residents didn't have access to driveways on one of the... On the south section, I believe, it's served by alleys, so they don't have driveways to park in, and it was seen that people had to walk too far away to park, as opposed to typically a winter regulation would allow you to park across the street. Here, you wouldn't be able to park across the street either. So we are recommending that we keep it the same, but communicate to village residents the need and importance of moving vehicles during snowfall through 10:00 a.m. the next morning.
All right. When do we plan to start communicating that?
So we would send a letter out. If this gets passed tonight, we would send a letter out as soon as possible. We already have the labels run, actually, and so it would be a matter of sending that out, and then the communication plan is also in the packet with general recommendations, and that would include just clarification that Menlo would remain posted and regulated as is.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Ursink.
I just wanted you to elaborate a little bit more on the communication plan. I think, you know, us as trustees, we get a lot of emails about parking and confusion around parking, and, you know, frankly, I sit through all these meetings, and sometimes I'm confused about the parking, to be honest with you. I know a lot of this is new, and eventually it'll all click with me, but I would love to be able to, you know, really hammer this home with residents when it comes up this winter, if we do proceed with all of these items. I guess this question is kind of in relation to probably the majority of items. What's our plan for that kind of communication, and how do we, you know, and how do we plan to get that out quickly? And repetitively?
Yeah, so I'll just... I'll note that with respect to winter parking, we're actually reducing the regulation, and so it's... It should hopefully be seen as something easy for people to understand and comprehend. It's not changing things to the more restrictive end of things. But with respect to the actual specifics, I am hoping I can defer to village manager Ewald to put together the communication plan just to... Over any particular questions you might have, but there's a lot of village manager memo, social media, kind of post of that nature. We may be able to get something in the Shorewood today as well. I'm not sure what the deadline for that was, but if Rebecca, if you would mind, I'm just kind of elaborating on what's in the communication plan.
Sure. We have one. It's the same communication plan that's in the packet. The first one starts on page 296, and it's going to be a combination of us reaching out to people. You know, this winter parking regulations go into effect December 1st, so one of the great tools we're going to be able to use is the new Ames Parking System that will blast out notices. We're going to do that three times, just to... Typically, after three times, people will start catching on, just to kind of start letting people know what those regulations are. They just toggle back to the other screen. You'll see in here, last week, we, you know, provided information to the bid district regarding the change in regulations. We've also geared up an article within Shorewood Today to provide some notification of the changes that are upcoming. As Dr. Gripenchung relayed, we'd be sending just a notice to those individuals on Menlo, letting them know that their winter parking restrictions will remain the same, but requesting their compliance due to the narrowness of the roadway. We would also, again, should the board choose to approve this tonight, we'd go through redistributing to all of our outlets and community partners, such as the bid and the school district, municipal court, letting them know about what those modifications are. When this does go into effect, you'll notice on page two of the plan that the CSOs who are chartered with enforcement of the ARC ordinance will be doing a soft start in terms of placing flyers and reminders to vehicles that are on the street on the 28th, 29th, and 30th of November, and then on December 1st through 4th, doing warnings and then going into enforcement with regards to the new regulation. With regards to the two-hour and 15-minute parking, Public Works has ordered this signage, and they're going to be inventoried and updating it as necessary in those areas, so enforcement will be done with those regulations in the field at the time that those are swapped. Bert, did I miss anything?
Yeah, I was going to... To your last point, I was just going to say, with winter parking, I think the best way that the village currently communicates that is through the signage that we have. And so DPW, if this gets adopted, will hopefully have the time in the month of November to remove those excess signs, which will be the most clear, that people will realize that now I can park here, because it won't be signed for winter parking regulations. So unlike night parking, which we don't sign individually on blocks, we don't say you must have a permit, right? So that was harder for us to communicate to the general public, because it's not as in-your-face, so to speak. Winter regulations and tour regulations are signed specifically on the street, so hopefully, those will be more easy to comprehend, just simply by being, you know, on that block or near that curb. You'll see that... You'll see whether or not it's posted. So as a reminder to people, you can just tell people, you know, winter regulations are posted, so if you don't see them, they're not in effect. But if they are posted, obviously, don't park in those streets on those dates or in those months.
I appreciate that. Thank you, guys. And then I assume on the... You know, just I had a resident with a question, and I tried to find the answer recently about night parking, if they, you know, when they can be on a certain side of the street. And I was like, you know, let me just look real quick, and it actually took me a little while to find the information I needed to find on our website, and, you know, I know we have... It's comprehensive. We have a lot on our website, but I just want to make sure that we're kind of looking back on our website and making sure that everything is maybe spelled out a little clearer, so residents have to, you know, go really digging deep for fairly simple sort of questions. So maybe just... Maybe at some point, we can just kind of reexamine our website and try to clearly and simply lay things out for people.
Trustee Ursink, I appreciate that feedback. I think it's a little out of scope for this discussion, and I would encourage trustees, when you have suggestions like that, to direct them to staff directly if it's not an agenda for discussion.
So no...
Just a gentle reminder. But I think a great suggestion.
Yeah, and alternate side parking is actually the next item up for discussion, so we can hopefully maybe cover that as well.
Any other trustee discussion or emotion? Trustee Warren?
Yeah, I think I can make the motion here. Let me flip back. I move to approve ordinance 3030 and ordinance amending subsection 500-26, winter parking.
Second.
Motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink. Further discussion? If not, this will be a roll call vote?
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President Mckegg.
Aye.
Vote passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Moving on to nine C, consider ordinance 3030... Oh, yes. 3031 and ordinance amending subsection 500-16, night parking. Trustee, I mean, Director Gripenchung.
Thank you, President Mckegg. So once again, this was provided initially as part of the six-month update, and on August 2nd, with direction for staff to proceed with this drafting of this. To the previous points, the analysis recommended ease of comprehension for people to understand our regulations and to enforce them. And so with respect to both of those goals, we are asking that the ordinance be modified to expand night parking from currently 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., to 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., which would give our CSO staff adequate time to cover the entire village. Currently, it's possible that they don't get to the whole village at this... You know, within those two hours, and so we're missing parts of it. So if we expand it to three hours, 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., they'll be able to cover the village and adequately enforce so that people don't quote-unquote "get away with it" and think that perhaps, you know, it's not enforceable. So this would expand that. With that, obviously, there is potential conflict with some businesses that might be closing late hours. CSO staff will be directed to not cover the commercial districts first to allow those employees and residents, and I should say, customers, time to leave the village if they need to at that time. So it would expand it from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. to allow for greater consistency and ease of enforcement. And then we are also recommending that we remove the alternate side parking requirements in residential areas to previous conversation that has been the most difficult to communicate and for residents to comprehend. We try our best to communicate that at the time of issuing permits and et cetera, but every block is different, and so it's really hard to make that a consistent message. DPW actually informed us that it has not helped their operations, just based on the timing of it. They're not really doing much at, you know, at those times of days, and by the time they get in, it's really not helpful that those are there. And so in general, we're looking to have the board allow us to remove the alternate side in the residential districts, but we would keep it on the Oakland and Capitol east of North Oakland Avenue, where DPW said it has been helpful. And so this ordinance, just to summarize, would expand the night parking hours from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. and only require alternate side parking on Oakland and Capitol east of Oakland. And with that, we would also expand it to seven days a week, simply because if they need to plow on a Sunday, it's not helpful that we don't have alternate side parking there either. So DPW was involved with the drafting of this, and they have informed us that residential areas are not required, but commercial areas, it has been super helpful, and so they would like to keep it in those areas. Capitol west of Oakland is just a different animal with limited parking that there is anyways, and so it's not helpful there to them. And so that is a general summary of what this ordinance would do.
Thank you, Bert. At this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment. If there's anyone, any member of the public would like to be heard on this matter, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself, and please state your name and address.
President Mckegg, I don't see anyone who is raising their hand to speak to this item, with the exception of trustee Ursink and trustee Baldoff.
Okay, I'm just going to give a few more seconds if anyone's having trouble getting off mute or finding the icon. Okay, at this time, I will close public comment and move on to trustee discussion and deliberation. Trustee Ursink, were you first?
I just plan to make a motion, so I can hold off unless trustee Baldoff has something to add or a question to ask.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I guess I just want to raise the flag that I think this is good in general, and I want our staff to have the time they need to get the job done. But I just worry a little bit about, you know, well, it's two to five, not three to five, except we're going to say we're not going to prioritize that. commercial district because I, I just have concerns about, you know, what does that mean to the staff? And if you have new staff and then down the road, is there confusion? Like, I would just worry about the staff that are working at those establishments. And I would hate to have a situation where it's like, you know, 2:15, 2:20 and they get a ticket. And what happens if they go to try to fight that and you know, it's posted two to five. And we say, well, you know, we actually meant for it to not be prioritized on that district. Like, I guess I just worry about what are the actual protections for them? And that's especially a concern to me of, you know, like I said, the, the staff that are, you know, coming in to, to work in our village and I want to make sure they are not punished when they're doing their jobs. So I mean, would it be possible to make the changes everywhere else and just leave like Oakland as is? Or like, what can we do to make sure that we have it, you know, codified somewhere then that we don't want to be penalizing these staff if this is something that's, you know, it sounds like that's a concern to folks in the business district or, you know, you guys wouldn't have brought that up and been thoughtful to consider how you could lessen the impact. So just curious what we could do.
Yeah, I mean, staff at those establishments, they are eligible to get permits or temporary permissions. That might not be the solution that you're looking for. And that we really did struggle with having two different districts, just for in terms of communication. Once again, that's difficult for us to have signage that says, you know, commercial districts are different than residential districts because this is only communicated really through our gateway signage. And when people purchase permits. And so if you're not purchasing a permit, the only real way that you see is through the gateway sign and the gateway sign currently has the 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM timeframe on that. And so if that is an issue and we need to discuss modifying that timeframe, I think that's the only way in my current off the cuff discussion. And I see Becky has her hand raised, maybe she's got a better idea.
Well, we've been in communication also with the municipal judge. So she's aware that there may be changes made and she's asked to review them as well as understanding how enforcement will take place in the first month so that as things happen, because she's cognizant of different, you know, regulations going to play and how that may impact people. We do intend to do soft starts in these areas and put communication out through the bid and our, our regular channels. So you know, we're, we're hoping that that information does reach people. Ends reviewed like other changes that we would make. You know, after a period of time, people tend to follow suit once new regulations are put in.
Trustee Ursink and then trustee Warren. Oh, trustee Baldoff, does that? Do you have anything else to say? I'm, I'm hearing that there's not a, I think the only way we could do is in the motion to make a different motion procedurally, which I wouldn't be comfortable doing on this, I think. So let's hear from, actually, so let me just ask you, trustee Moore, would Baldoff, is, would you like to say anything else or does that complete the discussion for you?
I, I'm okay for now. I'll let the others.
Thank you. Trustee Ursink and then trustee Warren.
I'm just still trying to make a motion. So you can just, I'll just let trustee Warren go and then I will. Nobody else has anything to say, then I will make the motion.
Right now, I, and I, to be clear, I'll be supportive of, of the motion. I just thought maybe, you know, just trying to, I think trustee Moore Baldoff makes an excellent point. So I, I guess, and I don't think this necessarily needs to be part of a motion or needs to be incredibly formal, but if we do start to hear a lot of complaints about staff getting tickets at 2:15 in the business district, I would like, please, please let us know, make us aware so we can put it on a, a future agenda and try to fix it. I mean, because that is not the intent here. The intent is not that staff gets tickets. The intent is that, you know, we start in other places. So if that inadvertently starts happening, it'd be great to have that come back here and then we can figure out how, how to solve that problem.
Rebecca?
I also just want to provide the clarification that moving up to 2:00 AM doesn't mean that they start in the business district. There's an entire village that requires enforcement during that period of time. And the suggestion is actually coming from the people doing the enforcement. It's a lot of ground to cover, you know, so there's, there's strategy that can be used when, when going through that. And especially with the change, I think that that's something to also take into consideration. So it's not just this regulation that gets enforced during this time. So that's just for some level of context. It's one of many. So just keep that in mind.
Captain Leventhal, I see you've joined the. Would you like to say anything?
I was just gonna echo the same thing that president or village manager just had stated, that basically this is coming from our CSOs and part of, partially coming from our CSOs and they are the ones who are saying to us that they will start in other areas. And this is something that we have talked through thoroughly on our end, is that the plan would be not to start in the business district to do the enforcement activities. So.
Thank you. And I can also say, one of the, you know, best things about the size of our organization is that it's, there are not a lot of CSOs. It's pretty easy to get the message through and it's pretty easy to find out if something's not working. So we can take care, we can be very, very responsive. And that has come across very strongly in the, definitely the overnight shift roll call meetings of how responsive the officers and CSO want to be to the business district especially. All right, trustee Ursink, make that motion.
I would be happy to. So I move to approve ordinance 3031 in ordinance amending subsection 500-16 night parking.
I'll second.
Oh, oh. How did I just do that? Sorry, I thought I lost you there. I'll just say, trustee Baldoff, I meant to say thank you for bringing that up because any change can definitely impact people. And I appreciate clarifying those, the thought that's gone into this with implementation. All right, we have a motion and a second further discussion by trustees. If not, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to 9D, consider ordinance 3032 and ordinance amending subsections 500-19 two hour parking limit and 520 one hour parking limit, 500-21 10 and 15 minute parking limits and 500-34 hour parking limits. Director Gripenchog.
Thank you, President McCag. So the third and final ordinance before us tonight would look to make daytime regulations more consistent in the village. If you've had the pleasure of to walk around and review signage like I have over the past three months, you will realize that it is not very consistent, particularly in the business district where one block might be one hours eight to four and the next block is eight to seven without Saturday, et cetera. So when we had the consultants on hand for the analysis, they did recommend for comprehension, once again of the user and for enforcement, that we generally have consistent commercial regulations and consistent residential regulations. And those regulations would be two hours or 15 minutes. The 15 minutes primarily relates to the school district area for drop off pickup kind of areas. And the post office where we've historically had that 15 minute, every other place would be two hours. For some greater context, when the village adopted the residential commuter congested area in the southeast quadrant, the village did decide to regulate daytime hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, two hours, except Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. So to be consistent with that, we are recommending that all daytime regulations match that format. And so the date, the residential areas would be 8:00, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. And the village, commercial districts of Capitol and Oakland would be two hours from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, except for Sundays and holidays. So Saturdays, it would still apply there. And I did provide my notes package within, within the village, within the village board packet. So you can kind of see, because there's a lot of moving parts here. But it's, it's moving parts for a good thing because when, when the village adopted that residential commuter area, I believe in 2006, they did not clean up the code. And so they left a bunch of things in there that shouldn't have been left in there. And so what we are doing here is we're removing unnecessary sections and unnecessary street sections because those sections are covered elsewhere. And so that southeast quadrant is covered in a whole different area. It should not be in this area. So what is before us here is a cleanup to make things consistent and to regulate the residential areas where it's posted. There are plenty of areas in the village where it's not posted. So this would not be expanding those areas. It would just be clarifying the areas to be, or the timeframe to be consistent. And then making Capitol and Oakland consistent for the 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, except Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. And so this one looks like a lot more than I think it actually is, only because the code was left in such a poor condition that I think it really is time that this be cleaned up so that we can legibly read it and understand it when people ask us questions about it.
Thank you. That's a really helpful clarification that there's no expansion of regulation going on. It's more consistency in the areas that are already related. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter this evening? If so, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Anyone? Bueller?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
I don't. Okay, thank you. Well, your presentation was very thorough, so I know it answered a lot of my questions. So now I'm moving on to trustee discussion. I would like to make a motion or take questions. Is there anyone, if there's discussion, would anyone like to make a motion? Trustee Ursink.
I move to approve ordinance 3032 in ordinance amending subsection 500-19 two hour parking limit, 500-20 one hour parking limit, 500-21 10 and 15 minute parking limits and 500-30.
I'll second.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Thank you very much. Any further discussion from trustees? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes.
As we conclude this item, I just, I, I apologize for interrupting, but I do want to commend Director Gripenchog on the really detailed technical update and amendment of these ordinances. It took a leader to get this process started. It's something he's really stepped to the plate on and I want to express my gratitude to him on behalf of really everyone in the village that's impacted by parking. As well as Director Bushlick, who reviewed some of those ordinances, let Bart know he wasn't crazy when he found things that were out of whack. And as well as interim chief Leventhal in his review and really thoughtful discussions as we go through enforcement and implementation. I know that a lot of this seems maybe mundane, but I have to tell you guys, you're doing a great job because we're cleaning up a lot of stuff with regards to parking. And I know that it's been a lot of transition, but I just, when things are going in the right direction, I just want to remind you of the job well done that you're doing for the future of the village. So thank you.
Thank you, Bart.
Hey, thumbs up for Bart and all of that. And also I believe Amber, the parking checker, overnight parking checker, gave some good input as well, boots on the ground, literally. So, and remember, all this cleanup makes administration of the code and enforcement more efficient, which really uses our staff time more wisely. So thank you. All right, moving on to 9D, no. 9E, consider firm for police chief recruitment. And is this, is this Tyler?
Yeah, I'd be happy to see this one up. Thanks, President McCag. So in front of you this evening is an update and a consideration for our police chief recruitment. Going through our RP process, we received five proposals from firms interested in doing the work. We ended up interviewing three based on the substance and the strength of the proposals. Rebecca Uwold and myself along with trustee Warren as the public safety chair. Sharvida Parker of the Human Relations Commission and Craig Bullock from the Police Commission were the five that consisted of the selection and interview committee. After interviewing our, our top three, we are bringing forward a recommendation for the Rysling Group for your consideration. I did include a scoring rubric that kind of summarizes our thoughts of the three proposals we interviewed. The Rysling Group proposal is the highest cost, but far and away met, I, I think what a lot of the community members have been expressing as far as the desire and the need in the recruitment process, especially when it comes to community engagement. We felt had, had the strongest proposal. And when it came to, you know, EDI topics and just understanding, you know, some, you know, of those integral parts of our process, we felt very strongly hit that area compared to some of the others. I think the level of research that they did far exceeded other groups. They had read extensively the Alexander Weiss study, which none of the other groups even referenced during their interviews. So the fact that they also have that understanding of things that we've done internally and, and, you know, just reviewing and having conversations with police services, I think we felt gave that, gave them a, a leg up on some of the other firms. Trustee Warren, as someone who sat in the interview, was there anything else that you would like to echo or emphasize?
No, I, I, I I strongly recommend the Rysling Group. I was very impressed by the presentation. I'll let go some of the points you made, Tyler, in preparation for today's meeting. I pulled my notes from the meeting with Rysling, just to kind of refresh my memories to the specific points that really stood out for me. You know, I, I would also add, you know, they're relatively local, they're from Madison. First thing I noted down was very prepared. They also had a diversity, their, their team had a diversity within it. As Tyler mentioned, they not only knew about, they not, not only had read the Weiss report and they were the only group that, that referenced that. They knew about Sherwood initiative, other Sherwood initiatives around EDI. We did manage, you know, the elephant in the room, obviously, is that the highest cost. They emphasized their modular approach. You can add and subtract things. There's some flexibility. So Tyler was able to actually get them a little bit down from their initial price quote down to 30. You know, I, I thought that as, as they thought about how they were going to go through this process, that they were realistic too. They understood that there's, there's likely to be, there's likely to be some criticism. There's likely to be some, you know, people are going to be justifiedly so emotional about this decision. So they, they understood that that was going to happen. They, you know, they, 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 we asked them where, where their services start and stop. They started the application and they ended the swearing in is what they said. And that made an impression on me. Again, their presentation really had a focus on equity and diversity, equity and diversity training. They mentioned at one point, they come at this from a civil rights perspective. They understand that it takes a, a different type of leader in today's culture and that they're aware of that and they strive for that. So all in all, just a really strong presentation, you know, obviously, and, and I, I am sensitive to the fact that, you know, we, we want to, we want to spend as little money as we can, especially in these pandemic times, especially with some of the tax burden. But I, I think that the village would be very supportive of moving forward with this firm, right? I mean, I can't speak for the village, but they were, they were far and away the emphasis. but they were, they were far and away the emphasis on diversity, equity, the preparation. I think we'll get the best result with this team, and I lend my strong support to Rysling.
That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, at this time, if there are members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter? You can raise your hand or unmute yourself.
No, McKay, I don't see. Oh, that trustee Stokebrand has her hand raised, but there are no other members of the public.
Okay, so closing public comments and moving on to trustee questions or discussion or make a motion. Trustee Stokebrand?
Thank you. I was just wondering, so what's a group of people like who would be doing this search? Is it one or two people? What's their, what are they like, age demographics?
In their proposal, they have a team of four. Sue Rysling is the owner. If you proceed to move forward, you will see her at the next meeting, November 15. And then there might be a few other meetings you see her at, but most of the legwork is done by her, her team of three other individuals. So you can, for their demographics, I try not to get into age and race and that just because I don't want to, you know, be off, but I think they lean into that a little bit. And they provide some, some background there in the proposal, so I would just defer to that. But are all the, the team has some kind of public safety background. It's definitely probably a little bit more on the university end of public safety. But each three come at it a little differently. And their makeup of the team was a little bit more comprehensive than we would typically see in a recruitment. But I think with all the type of community engagement we're looking for here, we felt that that was appropriate.
And I appreciate, yeah, I don't think talking about age and demographics of the team would be appropriate at this time because of, this is kind of an extension of an interview process.
I guess I was looking for general information about the people. I, I guess I'm a little confused. So you say it's more academics than actual people, boots on the ground right now, kind of?
So one of, one of the three, actually, I worked for a municipality, the other two is a more university setting. These are all people who are retired from their original professions. But, you know, they've been doing this consulting work for well over five years at least now, together as a team.
Okay, and then I'm just looking, $30,000 would be charged, $10,000 to the 2021 budget? Is that correct?
That is correct, because we would bring forward a service agreement for the board to consider at your next meeting, November 15. And so what that service agreement would probably say is typically a firm likes to have some money upfront. So we would propose having a third of the agreement, $10,000, that would be paid upfront. And that would be charged to that contingency line item, which is in the village board budget. And talking with Mark, that has not been touched at all, and we don't anticipate anything else that would come out of that. So we felt that that would be an appropriate use of those contingency funds.
Okay, and so, excuse me, I just don't realize, what did we, what had we set aside for this, and how much over budget are we?
I believe this item was not budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
But Steph, Manager Ewald, you can?
No, I'm back, sorry. My internet was unstable. Do you mind asking one more time? My apologies.
No, it's, it's okay. No one knew that the chief was going to retire or resign, so my question is answered. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies about my internet.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Yeah, Tyler, when you said more comprehensive, what did you mean by that?
Well, there's a few more things that they would do that I think for outreach, especially developing the candidate profile, it would be more than what others would do. A perfect example is some groups would say they would have a meeting with all of our police officers and kind of have them all collectively provide their opinion. This group would meet with them more on an individual basis. So by creating that kind of environment, it's going to allow for some more honest conversations as far as what they're looking for, you know, in a, in a police chief candidate. It's the same, you know, with the community forums, I think some, you know, proposed, you know, that they would do it virtually. You know, this group expressed in the interview process that something like this personal, they want to be able to offer in person to people. So there's different things that they would do in outreach that we felt was, you know, addressed, because this is, I think, such a significant topic for so many people that, you know, we want to make sure that we do it in the most sensitive and right way. So having a virtual conversation versus an in-person conversation kind of creates a different tone and feeling for those that, you know, have such a powerful emotion behind this, this decision. So those are just a few examples.
And Tyler, if I might add one thing, sorry to jump in, they're also coming at it from a different place as the other presenters. They had clearly done their homework, you know, they're already familiar with some of the things that we're doing. So they can build on that base of knowledge and really, you know, it's like they're at a, you know, other, other presenters might have been at a 101 level, they're at a 301 level, and that's going to make the product better because they're just coming at it from a different place, or they're coming at it from a more advanced place in terms of their knowledge of what our community is doing.
So they did their homework, okay.
Yep, that's one way of saying that.
Thank you.
Trustee Baldoff?
I just wanted to thank everyone who worked on this, and thank you, trustee Warren, you know, for being a part of this. It looks like we had some good proposals. I agree that this Rysling one looks like it is the best fit for our village. I really appreciate that they clearly all understand how to work in Wisconsin and understand our communities. And I thought that was really important as well. I know that, you know, the other, some of the other folks who responded, you know, did have some familiarity with Wisconsin. But it seems like, you know, this group really, really knows their stuff. And hearing that they came, came prepared with the knowledge of our community in, in particular was great. So I just wanted to say, I, I will definitely be supporting that proposal. And I would be ready to make a motion when everybody else is ready.
I'd say go for it now.
All right, let me see if I get it right here. All right, I move to direct staff to negotiate a service agreement with the Rysling Group to perform police chief recruitment services.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from trustee Baldoff, a second from trustee Orndorfer. Any further discussion? Trustee Stokebrand?
I was just wondering what we're looking at here. Did it include a timeframe and what, what is that? Is it like six months to be done, or?
From start to finish, it would be between like 16 and 20 weeks.
It looked like they had a, I thought, a pretty comprehensive timeline, you know, kind of laid out. Obviously, things, things can change once you get going, but it looks like, to me, they had a good timeline laid out.
Pretty tight. Did that, any further questions? Kathy? No, okay. Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm really thrilled with this. We had no idea going into it what kind of responses we would get, and this is a really pleasant surprise. I think having a recruiting firm on this is absolutely essential since the Police Commission is an independent quasi judicial body who's in charge of selecting the police chief. It, you know, it's really important to have a recruiting firm that can work between all the stakeholder groups. And it keeps staff and the village board out of it. So I'm really appreciative that we have the confidence, and thank you, trustee Warren, for your leadership on this. All right, if there's no further, any further discussion? All right, if not, why don't we do a roll call vote just for clarity, please?
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Backwurst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President McKay?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Wonderful. All right, moving on to item 10, reports of village officials. 10A is village president. Updated League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference. We kind of touched on it a little bit before the meeting started, but I just wanted to give trustees who attended, you know, literally a minute, if you wanted to share a takeaway. I personally, I really appreciated the workshops I attended. There was a diversity, equity, inclusion one. But it's a mixed feedback, but I'm glad that I went and it gave me some good things to think about. And then two zoning workshops that were really helpful in terms of thinking about affordable housing and also how our process is working forward. So I look forward to bringing that new knowledge and circulating the materials. There was one PowerPoint that wasn't on the website that I would like to get from the league and then share. Any other trustees who would like to take a minute or so?
I thought it was, I thought it was great, you know, I made some notes. I attended the diversity, the diversity seminar, among others, the urban forestry, the attorney seminar, and, you know, it's a good, it's a good chance to benchmark and see what others are thinking. And sometimes it reinforces some of the practices that you're, you're using in your own village. Like, for the diversity, the diversity seminar, they talked about engaging youth. And other times, it makes clear that, you know, a lot of the issues that we grapple with and try to get right, other municipalities are grappling with, too, and kind of elucidates things you can do or approaches you can take. Like, for instance, you know, quorum questions came up, the attorney seminar, open records, things like that came up. So I thought it was a really valuable and worthwhile expenditure of time, and I enjoyed it very much and learned a lot.
Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, my biggest takeaway was really just kind of being with the group, you know, and, and, you know, being around others that are similar to us. This is just kind of, I think we're all into a really specific niche, you know, we're all, you know, this is not a normal thing that we do. And to be around other people that are kind of like us, that have that same passion that we do, was really inspiring. And also to be around the group, I think there's something to be said for this kind of a bit of a team building, group building, and I thought, I thought those, those fantastic opportunity to do all of that. I attended, I attended a couple of different seminars. One was on, you know, like kind of getting away from property taxes and different, different ideas for potential different, you know, fees, like different, you know, different ideas for moving away from property taxes. And I, and I thought there were some really interesting ideas as far as, you know, stormwater and, and, you know, a couple of other things that I'd love to explore within the village because obviously it's something that we, we do need to start talking about or thinking about is, is not being so reliant on our property taxes. The other one was urban forestry and seeing what different communities do, you know, to, to build up, to build up their, their canopies. And I think we're so fortunate that, you know, we are, you know, we're in Shorewood, and we have such a great diversity of trees here in, in the community. So just want to, just want to say, you know, thank you again to the village and the village manager for, for getting us all there. And it was, it was a fantastic experience.
Anyone else? Trustee Stokebrand?
Yeah, I would have to say, one of the things I, I didn't have high hopes for, but it turned out to be, it was so informal, but it was really helpful. It was called a small community roundtable where people just threw out, they would kind of go through categories, DPW, zoning, sewage, different things. And that was really interesting. And the other thing I thought was, touched me a lot, is my first time being at one of these, was people just saw my name tag and they said Shorewood, and they said, oh, I, we were helping with someone's estate, your police were so nice, and we love your village. And another gentleman said, I was doing a college visit with my child to UWM, and I said, we have to drive through Shorewood because it's such a great, quaint community. And it's just the kind of things that warmed your heart and make you value what we have.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. The other quick update I have is on Police Commission appointment process. There's still a vacancy. I got a volunteer from the Human Relations Commission. Charlie DeSando is interested in helping with interviews once we narrow down from 23 applications to a reasonable number to interview. And also input from Rick Cole, the president of the Police Commission. And I will, I, my, I haven't gotten into my new email since last week when the server was down. So I'll look to see if there's any input on process from the Citizen Police Accountability Group, since I'd ask for their input as well. So just an update, haven't scheduled any interviews or narrowed down the pool, but that's the update from here. 10B, village trustees. Trustee Stokebrand, update on the Budget and Finance Committee from earlier this evening.
Yes, trustee Orndorfer and trustee Warren and I went through the proposed, some proposed budget cuts to decrease the tax levy increase a little bit. And there were, let's see, I believe we went through six items ranging from Squad Six to the Gator, Village Hall Roof Trim, DPW Tuck Pointing River Club Painting and a new boathouse roof. We were in concurrence that we would take out, we would recommend taking out the Gator, the Village Hall Trim, DPW Tuck Pointing, and the River Club Painting, exterior painting. The other items that we favored taking out, there was one, it was a two-to-one vote with trustee Warren voting in favor of leaving it in, but trustee Orndorfer and I approved taking it out. That was the new boathouse roof. And then finally, there was a two-to-one vote to keep the squad. I was in opposition there. So if we go with the votes that we had there, we would recommend taking out an additional $74,000 from the Capital Projects budget. That would be the recommendation going forward to the board. Does anyone have questions? Maybe trustee?
Yeah, we heard.
No?
Yeah, the other members of the committee could come, could add to the report, but we can't discuss since it's not agenda.
Okay, I believe it up to you then.
So I'll just open it up to other trustee reports. Trustee Warren?
Not so much a report, just to kind of put it on the record for anyone who's out, for anyone, anyone who's out there sees the video. Our emails trustees was down for a few days last week, so we're probably all, are, I can't, I guess I can't speak for everyone, but my apologies at least. Now I guess the rest of the board feels the same because we're all probably a little bit behind. So if you haven't heard from us over email, that's the reason that we're probably all playing catch-up a little bit.
Trustee Ursink?
The Shorewood Farmers Market has concluded for this season, and Wilson Drive is now open for traffic. Sadly, I have to say everything, every time that happens, it, you know, hurts my soul a little bit because it's such a beautiful space to be able to walk and bike. And I always fear for the deer the first night because they forget about it, and they're just walking around like there's no traffic, and one of them is going to get it. But so as that closes, we start planning another really fun activity here in Shorewood, which is the Lake Bluff Ice Rink and the Shorewood Chill, which will be happening. I think it's for February 6th is planned right now, but the ice captains will start, will start thinking about putting out the ice rink, unfortunately, you know. You know, even though it's a lot of fun, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine that we're going to get there at some point, and some of us will be out at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, hosing down a grink of ice. But here we go, Shorewood.
One in the morning, hosing down a big rink of, of ice. But here we go, Shorewood. So that's the next fun activity coming up for us here.
Any other reports? Trustee Backhorse.
Yeah, I mentioned it before, but the Shorewood Cross Country, the boys are state champions this year. And the girls were runner-ups, so they came in second by one point. Was, you know, it was a great day, beautiful time up in Wisconsin Rapids and great way, my, my youngest is a senior and ran in the, in the state meet. And six years ago, my daughter podiumed as well in the state meet and when they came in second. Not just bragging about myself, it's just been a great experience in Shorewood here, you know, my youngest, like I said, is graduating. The Shorewood School System has served us well in many regards. I just wanted to give out a shout out to coach Newman, Dom Newman. Who, as many of you know, is also the Lake Bluff PE teacher, but has served as the boys cross-country coach for many years. This is his ninth title for state. And if ten, if you count, they also won state one year in track as well under his service. So. That's, he's a very well-respected coach. It's such a great event. Because there are so many people in, in the, across the state know him. Through cross-country and they'll root, they'll cheer on Shorewood students when they're there for, you know, the division two or three or one, et cetera. So just wanted to say it was, it was quite beautiful. So thank you. Oh, you're muted, Ann.
Moving on to ten C, report from the village manager.
Wanted to update you that today was Toya's first day. As we're onboarding her, she comes to us with municipal court clerk experience, but not with municipal clerk certification or training. So we're going to have her hit the ground running on all things election-related. Because if, most of you are not aware, we actually start that process in the next two weeks. With notices and things that are upcoming, the great year to learn and train on this because we will likely have four of them. So with the ebb and flow, it's, you know. Repetition, you know, helps in these cases in order to provide a. A more productive and team-oriented. Support system for her. As she goes through the process, Tyler and I will also be training. On a lot of the same tutorials to help support those activities. And help kind of take a look at some of the things that we've done in the past to see how we can. Include others within the organization and the process and also provide for sustainable operations in that area. With that being said, you're going to have the pleasure of continuing to work with me in the village board meetings. And, and I'm going to be pursuing the other. Clerk-related duties to help. Having, it's been a really great time being down in the clerk's office and with our customer service staff. I, I have to tell you, we sat in a meeting today and there were just a bunch of people who like working together and supporting each other. So that's what we intend to do in the next twelve months. But what that also means is that in the, during November, I'll be going back to the drawing board to evaluate. Work plans and load as everyone calibrates their work plans for the 2022 year. So my time, you can anticipate to be divided and like most great things that come up within organizations, they're not planned. And that's okay. And quite frankly, I think it has an opportunity to give us a lot of silver linings. That we would have not otherwise been able to explore and do. So I am really excited, I'm excited to learn and have an opportunity to get into some of the details, which. I love to do, but don't necessarily always have the opportunity to do. We, you know, it's just been a really great process working with everyone and communicating in terms of how to best support each other as a team. And as those work plans become updated, I will anticipate providing you with an update. At our first meeting in December and bring back to any concerns or issues that I see in terms of timing of initially scheduled initiatives. So I'll be basing priority order based upon core services. And then transitioning off, like our work plans, I'm a fan of working in the work plan mode because it puts things on paper. But what it also does, it provides a framework. So if we need to pivot. Or move to address something else because we're all going to be learning through the process internally. It allows us a good roadmap to see and adjust what our timing may be for a different item since they come up in the future. So you can anticipate hearing from me more at our first meeting in December. What I also bring to you, our annual rollout of meeting dates for 2022. I can't believe that it's already November first. And I'm feeling really fortunate to be able to work with the group of you, knowing that I know you're, you're going to be. Supportive and really thoughtful and how we work through some of these new staff changes. And also look forward to bringing some really talented people on board whose energy has just been really inspiring to me. So. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you for that update and your leadership. To make this the most creative and inspirational time. You're the one person I know that looks at transition as a great opportunity. Thank you very much. And any of the trustees that have questions for Rebecca about that, please follow up as needed. So, but, because I get the pleasure of meeting with her every week, so I take it for granted that. Things sometimes are more clear to me. So I want to make sure that all the trustees. Feel like they have an idea of where the organization is going so that you can have confidence that our staff is well taken care of and the workloads are appropriate. So moving on to item eleven, item for future consideration. Trustee Ursink, the website, you know, it probably won't get for a while, but do you want to make a? Recommendation for a future item in terms of website review?
No, I don't, I don't think so, not at this time. I, there's, there's a lot more going on right now and, you know, if I can focus that a little bit more and, you know, and to be frank, I haven't really spent a lot of time on the website. So I'd hate to make some sort of suggestion that is, you know, it doesn't have a lot of basis. So maybe I could dig in a little further and, and if I still feel the same, I, I will make that at a future time.
Awesome, thank you. Are there any other items for future consideration from trustees? No? Okay. So if that's the case, then we have item twelve remaining and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, I'm guessing that was trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink?
Sounds about right.
All right, all those in favor, show of hands or voice.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are adjourned as of eight fifty-two PM Central Standard Time.
Wow, that's a record. That is a record.
Bye.